Potential that that could violate campaign finance. I'm not asking anybody to vote for me on this. I'm simply expressing my philosophy. And I think that's important for people to know when they decide who they're going to vote for or who they're going to support. Councilman Henderson?
Mayor, I read through the materials and, you know, my two cents, I didn't see anything worth really quibbling over. I think it's all straightforward information. Yes, it's a little bit different, but, you know, I can't speak to the legalities of it with regard to campaigns and such, but certainly I don't have any objection to anything that you've written in there.
Councilman Fleming?
I'm in the same position as Councilman Henderson. I read it and I thought it was fine. If you want to put yourself out there like that, then I have no problem. Personally, I haven't put my own resume on there, biography on there, simply because I'm not looking for a job, so I haven't updated my resume in a few years. I could do that, but I haven't. But I see, I didn't see any problem with having two pages versus one, certainly not taking up too much space, but I didn't think about the legalities of it, but I didn't see anything in there that concerned me personally.
Mayor Fortem McGinnis?
Actually, I already spoke, so I can leave that to Councilman Slater.
Councilman Slater?
I think you better understand here that none of you are lawyers. You just asked for a legal opinion from our attorney, and she told you that there could be a problem with this. I can't imagine why you would proceed forward with allowing this to happen when our city attorney gave us some advice that this could potentially be a problem. The mayor's not a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't think we should be putting the city at jeopardy because of this. This is just another, it seems like every council meeting, we're dealing with the mayor trying to present herself to the public, and I think we need to stay neutral with this.
I think that's out of order, Councilman Slater.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order.
I think you're out of order, Councilman Slater, because you signed the recall petition. So you have an agenda, sir.
Point of order.
Your point is?
Mayor, you would need to let Councilmember Slater finish speaking in order to allow him to the chance to talk.
And after I speak, other members get to speak before you get to speak again. That's the rules. This is the second week in a row, or second meeting in a row, that we've dealt with issues that are like this, and I think we need to listen to the city attorney. And let's wait and see what happens in November.
Attorney Bloom, could you explain to me what the ramifications could be if we put this on?
Point of order.
Excuse me?
The rules say that other members of the council get to speak before somebody gets to speak a second time. Is that correct?
That's a correct rule.
Please follow the rules, Mayor.
Councilman Teetz?
Yeah, this is the second time in two weeks something like this has come up, and I realize some people have opinions one way or another about recall, and they have a right to sign petitions, not sign petitions, and that's fine. I can't speak to the legal aspects of this. However, I would be hard-pressed to see how this is different than any other elected official's biography that you'd find online anywhere. So, I mean, I don't see any problem with it unless the city attorney can tell me someplace in the law or the statutes where this would be seen as, I don't see the word "vote" or "elect," it doesn't list the date of the election, doesn't say, doesn't refer to when she ran for office. I don't see anything on here except for, you know, some of her thoughts about what she believes government should or shouldn't be doing and her own background, so I don't think it's any different than the opinions expressed in other people's biographies about how they think they're qualified or are not qualified, and what benefits they bring to the city council. So, I'm curious.
Mayor.
Attorney Bloom, again, it's, first of all, I would strongly encourage that you have a social media policy. You don't have that yet. You should have that. That's something that we should have. Again, I'm, you know, this is kind of off the cuff, and you've asked me to respond to it. I, you know, I saw it for the first time in the packet that this was coming forward. I am concerned about the timing and the cumulative impact. We are in the midst of an election. This is certainly different than the other biographies that are out there on our webpage already that have been there for some time. The timing of it is a concern for me, and again, there are a lot of things, I haven't done a detailed analysis, I will just tell you that I have a lot of concerns about the potential for either a Campaign Finance Act violation or, at a minimum, an allegation that that is what has occurred, that the city resources, the city's webpage, the city's, you know, resources are being used in support of or in opposition to a campaign, which is the recall campaign. So, again, Mayor, without, you know, doing a detailed analysis, I can do that, I will just tell you that I think that there is some exposure for the city.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Fortem McGinnis?
You didn't go yet, did you?
Real quick, maybe, maybe it would benefit you to sit down with the attorney and go through the information and see what can be crafted to get your points across yet still fall within the legal guidelines that she has concerns with. I don't know to what extent you've done that, but that might be an alternative at this stage.
Mayor Fortem McGinnis?
Here's my big issue, just to break it down. I think that we can, we can all see this just by looking at it. I think the main issue and the main difference is that it really appears that one could subjectively interpret this versus the more objective format of the other one, that's essentially just a resume, which you've offered. And obviously, I don't think anyone is going to object to you putting a resume on the website because it's very objective. And I just think that, given the political nature of what's going on in the community, I don't know why you, as a mayor, would want to open yourself up to that, much less anyone here on council, when we know that we've got something in place that offers you the ability to give the community information about yourself, a way to contact you, which I actually don't see on the one that you've submitted, which I thought was a bit off-putting, but I think it's really the bigger picture here. I don't want to give direction to the city attorney to spend a ton of time researching this issue when I think that the issue should be fairly clear for us at this time. And I think that we should really take this into consideration about a lot of other things because we're having this conversation about the resume right now here on council, but there are other issues that I really think necessitate us looking into a social media policy. So we have the answers. I'm not sure why. It seems like all of these things need to be addressed recently, but I would prefer that everyone's on the same page moving forward because I think that we need to have clear-cut answers about what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. We have it for the departments. We have it for the contractors that do work with the city. They can't freely utilize the city name. They can't freely utilize the city logo. They can't go ahead and put their own drafts of their bios and information about their company on our city website. So I really think that this same thing needs to apply to us, and there's nothing in place at this point. So we can't say someone is not doing it or is doing it. I think we need to come to that decision on council, but I think it seems to me that it's very clear that this is much more subjective. And in a political environment in our community right now, when you know that people may potentially be looking for something that they can subjectively decide is not right, it's just not the right thing for us to do at this time. So.
Would you be willing to follow up on Dave's suggestion, to consider doing something else? Meeting with the city attorney, finding something that would satisfy what you're looking for and still fit within the lines?
If that's the direction the council wishes I would take, then that's what I'll do. Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, under circumstances, I think I had not considered the legal ramifications and don't understand, I'd like to spend a little more time with the attorney, but I know she's got a lot of things on her plate now, too, heading up, hiring the new city manager and so forth and that whole process. But I think there's wisdom in what's being suggested here by Councilman Henderson and Councilman Teetz, and I would support that. And ultimately, hopefully, you can find this to put on one page, incorporate in the format that's, you know, approved with the, but if you want to put other things in there, I think it should be vetted with the city attorney so that we're sure that we're not setting ourselves to any campaign finance law risk. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion's over. Do you want to speak again, Councilman Slater?
Just that I thought you already had met with the city attorney to discuss this.
I have met with the city attorney.
And I think she gave you some advice.
Next on the agenda is a council referral memo written by Councilman Fleming. You have the floor, Councilman Fleming?
Okay. Thank you. I had a meeting with Mr. Culpepper along with Dave Henderson, and put these referrals, asked that these referrals be put on the agenda. I'd like to go over them for discussion to determine if there is support to proceed with these communications to the council and basically to put it on the website and open Troy. The first item was a report that shows retired City of Troy employees' pension report detail to include all retirees. And I put on there the information I'd like to see, and it's open for discussion, open book here, but I think it's important as we're just finished the budget. I know we're going into contract negotiations next year. It would be good to get all this information out there. It's my opinion that this information I'm asking for on these various reports here are going to be really helpful to the community to understand exactly where our costs are associated with wages and with pensions and so forth. And in no way should this be a threat to anyone that's retired, who's earned their retirement, that's drawing pension. We have to protect going forward, though. Our past city manager, John Zurlag, told us that if we didn't do things and take some cuts and look for the rabbits, as I think was mentioned, that we'll be out of money in five years, that we'll use up our fund reserves. The largest cost that we still have in this city and in any city pretty much is payroll. And we have to look at the pension detail. I believe what we've done in the past, that set, that's not taken away from anyone that's retired, but going forward, I think we have to take a serious look at what we're doing and if we're doing enough to control our cost or if there's something else we need to do. But I think the first thing that's important on item one here is to take a snapshot of what we're spending here, and I think you have to break it down. So many times, we get reports and we get graphs and so forth, but if we really want to get the details and be open and open Troy, and on our website, we would put the name, that's subject to compromise. I'm open for suggestions there. Maybe we put a title, but a department, the year the person retired, the years of service, the yearly pension, the medical benefits, and then the total. That's the first item I'd like to discuss, and I've got others that could go down the line. But I think everyone on council should be looking at that report now. It's LO2, and we'll just start with that one right there to discuss that before we move on to the next one. If I got support on this, then we would ask management to put that report together. I think it's something that should be relatively easy because if you're paying a payroll and pensions, you have that, all that information at your fingertips. It's not something that needs to be created. So.
Mayor Fortem McGinnis?
I just have a question for Councilman Fleming. I know that you've generated a list of things that you would like to see the information provided, and I guess I'm just trying to figure out the goal, is the goal to get the information to the public or is the goal to get, obviously, it's both, but is the goal to get the information to the public just so that the information is available to them, or is it to compile certain sets of information for council to use at, you know, a date or time certain for making decisions going forward? My concern is this, and I know we talked about it when this was brought up by Councilman Teetz at the last meeting under council comments, just in generalities about getting information. Putting all this information together is most likely going to be time-consuming. Getting all the information at the same time may be somewhat overwhelming, so I think, and it's obviously going to be a tax on the HR department, which I think is down to two people at this point. Not that that's a reason not to do it, but I would like to really streamline it. If we're going to have a conversation about something in particular, or you think there's a certain amount of information that's on here, so we can prioritize a little bit because I know if we ask, go through this list and ask all of this information to be provided here at the same time, one, it's going to be a huge tax on the HR department, but two, it's going to be, we're just going to be inundated with information without any clear direction on where we want to go next. So I don't know if, I guess I wanted a little bit more information about what the goal is. Is it just to compile the information and send it out to the public, or is there a way to prioritize issues that you'd like to work on so that we can get the information in a way that's going to be most meaningful to us?
I think to follow our rules and procedure, everybody should talk, and then I'll respond, hopefully, to everybody. I don't want to violate any rules and procedure.
Session?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add something to this. I think this request is very legitimate, and a lot of the information can be a bit time-consuming to get together. And I have to agree with Councilperson McGinnis in that if we take it to the end and try to establish our goals, it might be better than just creating a large volume of information without realizing what those goals are. As an example, let's say there's a particular union contract that is coming due relatively soon. Perhaps we would want to target benefit packages related to that rather than taking a broad approach for something that may not occur for about three years. And actually, take our time and be a bit more efficient with it to say, let's look and see what the impacts that are possible or the current impacts to the budget in that particular area, and then maybe take the bigger picture. It's basically taking small bites of this at a time. Also, because of the volume here, if the staff can report back in bite-sized manner, I think we can get a better direction on where to go, such as that vector can be changed. If we think we're going a certain way, we can come back to the council and say, this is what we're providing. Is this where you want to go? The direction may be, no, you're off-base. We'd like to concentrate over here on this particular item, this particular percentage, things of that sort. So in summation of what I said, I'd like to be a bit more specific, try to be streamlined, come back to council periodically. Now, I know I'm not going to be here when much of this takes place, but I think this might not be a bad way to hand this off to my replacement.
Councilman Henderson?
First, I want to thank Mr. Culpepper because I initially asked for a set of information that he provided in a pretty rapid fashion, and that sparked a conversation that we were able to have with him and Councilman Fleming to try to, you know, as you start to evolve some of these things and your ideas and your questions and so forth, more questions come into play. So I can appreciate the magnitude of the request that we're asking, but it's all important information that I think we all need to try to steer the ship a little better in the future. So I think sooner than later is good as we come up on contract negotiations and whatnot.
Manager Culpepper, you've been putting together information, as Councilman Henderson has indicated.
Yes, I've been collecting, I've been getting the easier information to collect. It's in a very raw form, and that's part of my concern, is trying to convert that from a raw form to something that's more manageable and more usable. When looking at the classifications in various unions across the board, I can't tell you the number exactly, but let's say there are about approximately eight or nine different classifications, and among those, there are at least three and sometimes four different tiers within them where there are different impacts. Now, obviously, when you look at some of the individuals within those tiers, it would tend to indicate that there are some individuals already receiving retirement benefits that you probably can't affect too much versus relatively new employees or maybe a new tier you'd want to create even. So, like I said, streamline and maybe do some targeting. Right now, I'm not sure what that target would be. I think that would be something that would be good for the staff to come back with, trying to identify targets and see if we're in sync with what the council is looking at. One other thing, though, I would like to recommend that specific names not be used. If we could come up with some type of code mechanism rather than a name, I prefer to do that rather than put someone's name straight out there in the public.
Councilman Teetz?
I'm fine with setting some priorities as far as what's most important. I think with point one regarding simply a listing of those folks that are currently inside the pension system would probably be my first priority, and I think the purpose is the same purpose that we try to have with the other things that we've put online is for the sake that, dispelling rumors and showing that we're doing things the right way. I don't, I think if you watch Channel Four, Channel Two, or whatever station you happen to watch, most folks walk away with it thinking that Wayne County is the prototype of what local government's like, and that's absolutely not the case. And I think it, Wayne County reflects poorly, or it sets a shadow over what we're doing. I think if this information was available, people would be able to look at it and compare and say, okay, that looks okay to me. And furthermore, this would be something that'd be available by a FOIA. For instance, the Detroit News FOIA'd all of the folks that have a pension with the state of Michigan, all 245,000 of them, including name, department, how much they made. And so I, I think this is part of being leaders, and we've done a lot of other things that are innovative and unique, that as far as being quite upfront with folks, and I think this is just another step. And this is one of our fiscal obligations because we've made a promise to folks and we need to live up to it. And if we're going to make that promise, I think the taxpayer also needs to understand the promise we've made over time and that we're going to have to live up to these promises going forward. So I guess my preference would be to see through, number one, first, just like we have placed employee pay and benefits online, and I think the categories listed there would not be particularly difficult to gather, but I'm ears if there are other thoughts.
Councilman Fleming?
Actually, I thought asking for all the detail was easier than doing it in segments and building it up because I believe with our payroll system, if we're writing checks wishing 1099s or W2s, this information's already available electronically. It's not something we have to create. Now, if we start massaging it and breaking it down by union and so forth, that's more work to me than what we're asking for here, which is the full report, and I respect it if we want to compromise and not put names but put classifications or something there. I'm okay with that, but just realize that if someone wants to FOIA that, they can, you have to provide it. But what I'm looking at here, this is something that should be available right now, immediately, exactly the information we're, I'm asking for here and suggesting without massaging it. Look at the whole thing, the big picture. What are we paying? Retired City of Troy Employee Pension Report Detail to Include All Retirees, not breaking down. Then we can determine how we want to break it down. But this report, if we're paying people every month and writing checks and cuming it, you know, and writing 1099s at the end of the year, this information's available. We can take a snapshot and say, as of December 31st, 2011, that information should be available at your fingertips, I believe. So that's why I asked for it in this level detail without having to do analysis. Now, I know the analysis is coming, but once you've got the big picture, then you can break it down and analyze the way you want. That was my thought on item one. Same thing for item two.
Further discussion? Do you have some, any direction now with what you would like to do at this point, Councilman Fleming?
We're either going to do this with the nod of council and giving direction to the city management, or we're not. And I'm here proposing this, but I think we have, you know, to get the, get the nod of the majority of council to proceed, and I think we break it down each item, one at a time, so we're not confused. And so I'd like to know if it's the desire of council at this point to have this pension report detail provided and put on the website. And to answer a question earlier from Mayor Fortem McGinnis, it's basically both. Everybody should see, but I don't think it should just be for council. If we put it out there on the website, it's for everybody to see and analyze. Information that should be available anyway.
Councilman Henderson?
One of the motivations for me to even start delving into any of this is, you know, questions from the public regarding, you know, rumors and innuendo about various things. And, you know, in order to dispel rumors and to show fact, obviously, we need data. And this data has not previously been available to us or the public, and it would be nice to be able to have solid information that we can post openly so that we can point to it and say, no, that's just wrong. Here's, here's what we're talking about. And I think that's, that's my motivation.
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner Culpepper?
I'm getting a general drift of where to go with this. I do have a bit of a concern with just pure raw information when Councilman Henderson says, you know, someone can point to it and say, oh, this is, this is the answer. I did have one particular sheet that I produced that was eight and a half by 14 that I don't think anyone could possibly understand it, but it had so much information on it and so many different categories. But I think if we pull out what is available and we start with that, and we can see if it is overly confusing to the public, I'd hate to produce something that all of a sudden is just so confusing because no one can understand exactly what a particular term is because it might be an accounting term or something along those lines. There's no need to hide anything because obviously, this is something that should be done internally anyhow in order to keep pace with this, to know what you're going to do in another round of benefit reduction, benefit improvement, or however you consider it.
Well, now, Councilman Fleming, you met with Manager Culpepper and Councilman Henderson to work some of this already, correct? Could you think that you could now have more direction to try to tweak or make sure that you're getting what you want in an easy format that's not going to put a great burden on the manager?
Quite honestly, Mayor, I don't know how to make it any easier than department, the name or class, or name or code or something, a department, year retired, years of service, yearly pension, medical benefits in total. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven columns. I think most people are educated enough, they can look at that and say, this is what? One person, this classification, this department that retired this year with this number of years of service, what their yearly pension is, what their medical benefits are, and what that total adds up. That's adding two columns and coming up to a total. But it, I don't know how, when we start summarizing it and getting it graphs and so forth, it does get confusing, but this, this is raw data. And the reason I'm saying this is the simplest way is because I believe it's already available. Can you? Can you make decisions on this? I think you have to take it, break it down, and analyze it. But when we start waiting, you know, this information is readily available, not having to, I believe if we're actually paying people every month, issuing reports every year to them for tax purposes, but this is already available. And if we took a snapshot and said, "We want this as of December 31, 2011," I believe it's available within our accounting system. And maybe I should be asking our accountant, Mr. Darling, of Financial Services if we might, if that's available.
Mr. Darling?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, clearly, we have the information available. Is it all in one spot? I'd have to look with our IT department to figure out the years of service. That could be in a different platform than the earnings. Clearly, we have the earnings available. When it comes to healthcare costs, of course, the retirees also contribute to that, so I'd need some direction on, do you want net or what we're paying? What are they reimbursing? Those type of things. So, it does become a little bit more involved, I think, than just the raw data, but we can certainly do that.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to give the impression that we're objecting. I just want to indicate there's some things I see as a little bit complicated. I see no problem going forward with this, so please, no one be confused about that.
So, can you bring some data to the next meeting and at least put it in a format as Councilman Fleming is looking to get?
We can certainly do that. We can certainly do it in some sort of subcommittee that might even be, if that would be necessary. I have no problem with that.
Is that it, Councilman Fleming? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
If that's the direction we're going in, I'm not going to object to it. I think that the way you broke it down, you think that this is going to be the easiest for staff to ascertain because it's really all readily available. There's a laundry list of stuff that's here as well that follows this, so I guess that's part of the concern. It's not so much that there's an item on here that I would particularly object to compiling information on. I think it's the magnitude of the information. There's a lot of things that are on here that follow that, and I'm just leery of sending out a bunch of orders to compile information and then having it all come back to us and not doing something meaningful with it. So, if these are items that we need to tackle, and then we're going to figure out, A, how we're going to provide this information to the public in a meaningful way, and hopefully, B, how we're going to do something with it ourselves, I'd like to just prioritize because I know that on top of us dealing with the city manager, we're about to start a series of meetings here to get, hopefully, get someone in place. Some of the other things that we've already decided are important to us as council members. I don't want to send all of these requests for information out and then have them dumped in our lap in the midst of all that and not do something with them in a meaningful way. It's a waste of our time. It's a waste of the staff's time. So, if it's, if we're going to go ahead and get this first group of information and review it and make a decision if we want to do something with it, how we want to get it out there to the public, I don't have a problem with that, but I think, you know, the rest of the items then that are here on the menu, maybe we can either prioritize or wait till we get a certain set of information back. I mean, we may get it and say, "This isn't what we want. You're going to have to go back and do something else with this," or "What's the best way to get it out to the public?" So, we could potentially be tied up in figuring out what we want to do with it, and I think it will be better for us to get this information in a way that we can manage it on top of the other things that we're going to be doing with the city manager. So, I don't have a problem asking for the city staff to compile that. I would have a problem asking the city staff to go out and do all of these things and give us all this information right now.
Councilman Fleming?
I agree.
Okay.
I think we have to prioritize, and what I was thinking is, let's say, item number one is the first thing we do. Maybe that takes a month. Item number two, once we get number one, we meet on, we go for item number two, that might take another month. I didn't mean to infer we want all this for the next meeting, but we did. I'm glad we're having the discussion because I think item number one would be the first report, and we said we had that in a month, if that's reasonable. We look at that. The next piece, maybe we learn from the first piece, we want something different on the second piece, which is a wage report for each employee who retired in the past five years. Got that broken down. And really, on that report, I'm looking for total yearly pension and the amount of the yearly pension without overtime being calculated. It's my understanding that the pension in the city of Troy, some of the pensions are affected by the amount of overtime you've had in the past 10 years as an employee. That's the contract, that's right. That's what's happened in the past. Going forward, I don't know if that's the best answer because what it does, it lends itself, and I don't know that that's happened here. I'm not accusing. I've not seen any data, but it leaves itself open for people who are nearing retirement to start putting in a lot of overtime because that affects their pension. But if the overtime was not part of the calculation, it was only base pay, then it wouldn't have any impact. And I know some cities do it either way, you know, but some pay the overtime, some they don't, including in your pension. But that's report number two, and I think, once we get number one, we could look at that, see if it's what we're looking for, put it out to the public, we're ready, then go for number two. But it may take a month on each one. The third one is City of Troy Employee Healthcare Contributions Compared to Other Cities. That may be a difficult one to do. It may be easy because this information may be available from Simcock. I don't know. But I certainly don't think we need to be looking at number three until we get number one, and then number two in order, and then we get number three, which is the healthcare contributions employees make compared to other cities. Number four goes back, and this is a subject I appreciate the report that Mr. Miller put together for us in this package regarding the transit center and the cost detail, and that's moving forward, comparing what we're spending going forward. What I'm asking for here is something that a person that's spoken at the microphone a couple of times or several times about this, Mr. Savage, cost detail by year. I know we've seen totals. I know that some on council feel like this is we're beating a dead horse, but what I'm asking for here, so there's no doubt what we're looking for is cost detail by year since the city of Troy started this project. It'd be helpful to have the actual cost for each detailed expenditure each year and the revenue by year to offset this cost and the total net out-of-pocket cost to the city since the inception of this project. That puts to bed and is open book as to what's been spent on this project. I think the number that we've been provided is probably an exact number. It just needs to be documented going back. To me, that's fourth on the list. That's down the line. And then, number five, we've already dealt with. So, there are four things, and I thought if we dealt with number one in one month, number two in the second month, number three, the third month, and number four, the fourth month, not tie them all together at one time. That was my thinking, but I've talked enough. I want to hear what the rest of the council. If I've got support, fine. Let's give direction to management. If I don't have support, let's drop it.
All right. Councilman Slater?
I'd just like to talk about three, if I could. I don't know why, where you came up with these cities, but I think if we're looking to compare Troy, you don't compare us to Birmingham. I'm not sure which Bloomfield you're referring to. Bloomfield Township would be more comparable than, I don't know what Bloomfield is. Farmington Hills would be more comparable to Troy than Farmington. Rochester Hills, I think we should be using Oakland County as opposed to Rochester Hills, and I think Sterling Heights should be a comparable if you're looking. I don't know. Maybe there's a reason why you picked the ones that you picked. I don't know.
Councilman Henderson?
Such as?
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to, and we've had this conversation about what communities to use, and it's kind of a coin flip. We're looking at like sizes and so forth to just draw some comparisons. And, you know, if you want to add a couple in there to make it more complete, that's fine. You know, I have no problem with that.
Madam Mayor, usually, there are some standards that are used to compare city to city. It may be population, may combine with some square mileage, may combine with their type of management. Usually, we've have a list of that sort of thing, and if we could maybe look at that, the existing list of where our comparables are, that might be, might be good. I know Mr. Fleming probably put this together and put some names together and didn't get the exact Farmington Hills and got Farmington and that sort of thing, and I can understand that. But if we use those comparables, cities that we've used traditionally, we, those are probably, those are very effective.
Councilman Fleming?
I agree. I put compared to cities such as, I didn't want to be, didn't think it was all-inclusive or didn't want to exclude anyone, but I just put, started a list, but I'm open for suggestions there that we can certainly change those. Not a problem. But I don't know how we would determine. Maybe that management would come back with a list of who they thought would be the best comparisons. That's fine with me.
Why don't we just leave it for the management to come up with some suggestions? I don't think we need to belabor the point.
Well, you got enough direction, Manager Culpepper?
Okay, I think I, I think I've seen enough. Okay.
Okay.
We've got direction.
Thank you. We'll now move to council comments. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to breeze over this, and I probably should have brought it up earlier, but Mr. Miller and Mr. Le Pen put together a report for us showing Troy office market vacancy, Troy industrial market vacancies, and Troy retail market vacancies. And is the follow-up paragraph in the very first sentence, it's encouraging that the general trend of occupancy rates appear to be improving, which is great news in the, in that segment of our real estate. Specifically, we've gone from 84.8% occupied in 2010 to the industrial sector to 89%. We've gone 71% in 2010 in office space to 72.5% occupied. And I bring that up because, I should have brought it up during the, when we were talking about tax abatements. And, you know, my general philosophy on tax abatements is they're a great thing when you need to fill up buildings. If we were 98% occupied in all these sectors, you know, I would vote completely different. You know, similar to going to Nino's, and if they bought too many melons and they're starting to rot, you put them on sale. When we have so many opportunities to fill vacant buildings, we need to do everything in our power to try to draw those businesses in, and if it takes tax abatements, I'm all for it. There will come a day when, you know, we have more occupancy that, you know, I'll switch suits on that. But again, this is just encouraging news and encouraging on the residential real estate front as well these days. So, thanks for the report, and again, great news.
That was in reports, but we'll go back to council comments.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Two comments. When I wanted to make an announcement this weekend, on the 19th, Sunday, from 1 to 3, there is going to be an event at the Nature Center on Coolidge between South Boulevard and Square Lake. They're hosting an ice cream social, and it's not only an event for the members of the Nature Society, but it's also because they're looking to drive up their membership for those, for anyone that's at home listening or that's here. Obviously, the Nature Society is the group that has come in and taken over and is seamlessly running operations over there at the Nature Center, so everyone in the community should show their support and attend this event if possible this Sunday. And there's additional information about it and about obtaining a membership to this group on the website. And the other comment, on a much more somber note, I did just want to address the police department. It came up earlier in the meeting today, but obviously, our community is very aware of the situation that you've been handling with the recent case and its developments here in the city of Troy with the missing person and the homicide investigation. And I just wanted to make it known that as a council member, we're proud of how our department has handled the situation. It was horrible, a horrible one, but the police department demonstrated the utmost professionalism, and we appreciate what you were able to do for us as a community and for the family involved during that time, and I wanted to make that publicly known during the comments, so thank you.
Mr. Culpepper, I was given a copy of a letter that was provided to you. There's $2.9 million in uncommitted funds that are being offered to communities that are interested in the tri-party funds for road repairs. You received that letter?
Yes, ma'am. I received that from Commissioner Goslin.
Commissioner Goslin, yes, sir.
And we did get advance notice on that. We've been prepared since we got the advance notice to take advantage of as much as they will possibly send our direction. Of course, they said politically, they can't give all of it to us, but we're going to go for as much as we can possibly get.
Very good. Very good. Also, I attended a ribbon-cutting event at a, at the J.C. Penney's store in Oakland Mall. They have a new revolutionary business model where they have the concept of a store within a store, and this particular store within the store was Sofias, Sephora, excuse me, Sephoras. It's a trend-setting beauty store, and if you haven't been to J.C. Penney's lately, you should go there. It's really revolutionizing their new business model. It's excellent. Now, we'll move to reports. Were there any other reports that anyone wanted to bring up? Councilman Fleming?
I don't want to be out of order here, but it's actually under Letters of Appreciation in three, which I think falls under reports. It's actually in five, the Fire Apparatus Purchase Update. We had discussions about this a few meetings ago and asking the fire department to go back and see if the purchasing department, they could negotiate a better price on the latest fire apparatus we were buying, which is just over half a million dollars. I learned after getting the detailed report of that back from Chief Nelson and Susan Leirsty in our purchasing department, that I misinterpreted maybe something or read wrong in the original report. It was my understanding that the bid closed on July 1, 2012. Actually, the bidding closed on that, the option to buy that, nine months prior, but it was effective July the 1st, 2012. We were voting on this a week later. It was my understanding that we missed our window of opportunity by one week, and that was a reason for giving direction back to Chief Nelson and the purchasing department to go back and try to renegotiate that, which they did. But when I got the report back and looking at the detail over the weekend, I realized that actually, that bid closing was nine months prior, but it was only effective July the 1st. So, it wasn't like we missed it a week. We missed it nine months. So, that, if I had understood that in the beginning, I'd have never asked for a report. So, I apologize for the extra work and effort created by our fire department and purchasing department, but now have a better understanding. But thank you for the report.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. Well, there are no closed sessions or no study items, so I'd like to thank each and every one of you in the audience and at home for joining us and participating in our legislative process. Have a good evening. We hope to see you all again soon. This meeting is now adjourned.